The September 2nd meeting of the Eden Prairie City Council will now come to order. I'll rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Prior to the start of each city council meeting, we have an opportunity for Eden Prairie residents to address the council on issues related to Eden Prairie city government. Our council meetings are generally the first and third Tuesdays of each month, and the open podium portion of time is from approximately 6:30 to 6:55 here in the council chambers. If you wish to speak to the council at that time, please contact the city manager's office at (952) 949-8412 by noon of the meeting date with your name, your phone number, and the subject matter you wish to discuss. If time permits, after scheduled speakers are finished, I will open up the floor to unscheduled speakers. These portions of the meeting are not recorded or televised. If you have any questions, again, please contact the city manager's office. We're going to start off with a meeting of the HRA. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Aho.
Here.
Councilmember Butcher-Wickstrom.
Aye.
Councilmember Case.
Here.
Councilmember Nelson.
Here.
Chair Tara Locan.
Aye. First item, Mr. Adopt a Resolution to Approve the Proposed 2015 HRA Property Tax Levy to be $200,000 and to accept the proposed 2015 HRA budget of $200,000. Mr. Getchell.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As you know, both tonight at the HRA meeting and then later at the city council meeting, you'll be asked to vote on a preliminary levy and budget for the HRA in this meeting and then later on for the city council, and that needs to be done by, so at least still with the HRA, by September 15th of this year. The city has a little bit more flexibility, but we still think we can move ahead with the city budget. The HRA, you as an HRA body have the ability to levy a tax, and it's actually capped for all HRAs in the state of Minnesota at .0185 percent of the taxable market value. So if you wanted to levy to the maximum possible, that would be about $1.6 million in Eden Prairie. But you've consistently, at least for several years now in a row, have levied for the HRA a $200,000 levy, and we're proposing that again. And almost all of that, over 90 percent of that, $191,000 of the $200,000 are for wages and benefits related to employees that work on housing activities, CDVG loan programs, housing rehab programs, other housing and community service programs are where the vast majority of the money goes. So tonight, we're asking for you to again adopt that preliminary levy and budget, and as you'll hear also later with the city council, it is a levy that you could lower, but you could not raise. It's our intent to set these numbers and stay at these numbers, but there is the statutory ability to lower them, just not to raise them.
Mr. Getchell, do you have an idea of how we relate to other suburban statutory Class B cities in terms of our level of HRA levy?
I don't have the other cities' numbers in front of me, but I do know it does range from kind of that lower end that we have to some higher numbers in more of the central cities and inner-ring suburbs. I know we'll levy quite a bit more for HRA because they're in, doing more redevelopment, Housing and Redevelopment Authority work. I could get you some of the breakdown of the other cities, but I know we're probably one of the lowest when it comes to just being, you know, over, what is that, 15 percent of our capacity?
Thank you. You don't need to do any research.
Okay.
Any questions, Mr. Getchell? Okay, is there a motion?
I would move to adopt the resolution to approve the proposed 2015 property tax levy to be $200,000 and accept the proposed 2015 budget of $200,000.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. I'd like to go back to HRA Number 2, which is approval of minutes from the HRA meeting held on August 19th, 2014. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Second. Any corrections to those? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion pass.
I abstain.
One abstention. Okay, thank you. Next item is to adopt a resolution authorizing an amendment to the Housing Refunding Revenue Note for Elam Shores. Mr. Getchell.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Back in 2003, you authorized an issuance of Elderly Housing Refunding Revenue Note for Elam Shores and Eden Prairie, and they're requesting that they have the authority to amend and restate the original note to modify the provisions related to the interest rate on the note. So the resolution that you would approve gives the authority to restate that note, and I do know in case you have any questions, in addition to staff, there is a representative from Elam Shores here to answer any questions you might have.
Okay. Any questions of staff?
My assumption is that this is favorable for them to restate the rate, interest rate. Okay, good.
Yeah, I'm seeing a nod that probably refinancing at a lower interest rate is probably what we're looking at here.
Okay. Is there a motion?
No.
Oh, is there a motion?
I move.
Go ahead if you want to.
Okay. I move to.
For us that have not been in this, are we able to ask questions in this forum?
No.
No.
Okay.
Go ahead.
I move to adopt a resolution authorizing and entering into an amendment to the Housing Refunding Revenue Note, Elam Shores, Inc., Project Series 2003.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No, there's not opportunity to ask questions, but if you have questions, I'm sure Ms. Kachiver, our finance director, would be happy to answer any questions you have. The first item is approval of the agenda and other items of business. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Anything to add?
Yes, Your Honor, I'd like to add one item under Councilmember Reports.
Okay. Anything else?
Actually, I would like to add one quick thing, too.
Okay. All right. Mr. Getchell, do you have any changes?
Mayor, there is, actually, I have a change on the consent agenda, but we'll get to that there, but with the regular agenda, no.
Okay. All in favor of the agenda as amended?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Is there a motion for approval of the minutes from the council workshop held on Tuesday, August 19?
Move approval.
Second.
Any items to correct? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
One abstention.
Is there a motion for approval of the minutes of the city council meeting held on this same date?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any items to correct on those minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I abstain as well.
Motion passes. Thank you. Consent calendar. We have items A, B, and C. Mr. Getchell?
Yes, Mayor and Council, I ask that we remove item B. There's some more work we need to do on that agreement with Blue Stem, so we're just asking that you approve items A and C tonight and not B.
Okay. All right, is there a motion?
I move to approve items A and C.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes. There are no public hearings tonight, payment of claims. Is there a motion for approval?
Move approval.
Second?
Second.
Roll call, or any items to question there? Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Aho.
Aye.
Councilmember Butcher-Wickstrom.
Aye.
Councilmember Case.
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Mayor Tara Locan.
Aye. Ordinances and resolutions. We have item A to adopt a resolution declaring a public nuisance at 19184 Christie Lane. Mr. Getchell.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to turn this over to the city attorney to do most of the overview and discussion. Just to mention that it was just the last meeting two weeks ago that we had open podium and the residents, many of which are back tonight, had approached the council about their concerns with 19184 Christie Lane as a potential nuisance property that the council directed the city attorney and staff to follow up on possible abatement of the home, and that's what we are bringing back to you tonight. And it is a possible resolution action for you, and I will let the city attorney provide the background.
Thank you, Mr. Getchell. Madam Mayor, members of the council, we did follow up after the meeting. I described during the meeting that the possibility to take action would be to bring back to the council a resolution that found that the code violations and conditions on the property constituted a public nuisance. We have set out in the resolution that's before you for consideration those code violations and property conditions that we believe constitute a public nuisance. It's for the council to actually make that finding. And then the resolution goes on then to order that those conditions and violations be remedied by November 1st, 2014, but in addition that permits required for the abatement of those items be applied for by September 13th. So less than two weeks from now, the permit would have to be applied for. My office worked with staff to determine those timelines to, one, make sure we were moving quickly on it by requiring the building permits to be applied for by September 13th, and then giving what was considered reasonable time based upon the conditions to actually remedy them. Then if those conditions are remedied, that would be the end of the procedure. If they are not remedied, we would then bring an action in district court, asking the court to enter its order, essentially parroting and affirming the city's conclusions, but that could be a contested matter if the property owner and/or mortgagee showed up. We'd have to prove that these were, in fact, nuisance matters. But what we would be requesting is an order of the court, one, ordering the property owner and the mortgagee to make those repairs. So, one, we've had an order from the council if you adopt the resolution. If that doesn't work, we would get an order from the court ordering them to do it, and if they failed to do it, having that same order, say, the city could go in and make repairs and assess the cost back against the property. So if you adopt the resolution that's before you tonight, that's the process that you'd be putting into place.
Any questions for Mr. Getchell? I'm sorry, or Rosso.
Now, I would like to make a motion.
Okay.
I would move to adopt the resolution declaring public nuisances at 19184 Christie Lane, ordering abatement, and authorizing the city attorney to proceed with an action in district court if the public nuisances are not abated.
Second.
Any further discussion? Yes, Mr. Case.
Just a comment that clearly the neighborhood has been incredibly concerned about this and involved, and a couple, maybe, what's a good word, not self-decided, but leaders that have risen up in that neighborhood, and one's Tom Klein. He's been requesting that he somehow be as much as legally possible involved in any of the communications going back and forth, and I would just like to underscore if that's possible, put him on some kind of a list that at least anything that would be public anyway at least would maybe be able to go directly toward him in some, you know, form. I think he would be responsible for dispensing that out with the neighborhood, but it seems like that's, they just want to feel connected, it seems like, and want to at least be primitive things as they curve out, having always to come and ask or dig or something.
Sure, so we certainly don't want anyone to have to dig. I know our building official, Kevin Schmieg, has been a good contact for a lot of people and Mr. Rosso's office, but we'll come up with a protocol to make sure that as we go each step of the way into this abatement process and possibly district court that we can keep everybody informed, and we could even set up maybe some type of kind of email list of some sort, but we can certainly do that.
Great. That's all.
All right, thank you. We have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
The motion passes. Reports of council members, Mr. Case.
Kathy Nelson, Councilmember Nelson and I met on Thursday night with a newly-formed group of Southwest Metro Lakes, and I believe they're called the Southwest Metro Lakes Association, I think is the name, and they had their new chair there, and then they had, I believe, I'm not sure if they're elected representatives of many of the lakes of that region, but they're expressing continued concern with the actions of the watershed district, which seem to be imminent coming with some new role changes. And my concern tonight really is more information and keeping us as the elected officials completely knowledgeable, but also maybe making sure that our own decision-making powers are not impeded in any way by an unelected body that might even be, and I'm not saying they're in violation, but I just want to know more about whether they're in violation of what our rights are. So I'd like to suggest two things, and with council agreement, and it's fine if you want to argue back here, we can decide what's best, but one is that I believe the watershed district, the Riley Bluff Creek Watershed District, I believe is planning in their October meeting to actually pass these rules. And one suggestion, which I completely support, and I'm asking, I guess, for your support, would be that our city manager would contact the water, this watershed district, either their staff person, Claire, or their chair, Perry Forster, and request on behalf of us as a council that they postpone that, and I don't know, indefinitely for a little bit. Give us some time to be more involved here and find out more and get more information and see, get our legal opinion, really, from Mr. Rosso on whether actions are being done that possibly might, at least perceptually, be in violation of what our rights are. So that's one. And then the second would be that our city attorney, Mr. Rosso, would actually look at all these documentation, all these documents, because evidently this group, this new Southwest Metro Lakes Association has actually, I don't know if they've legally retained or if it's pro.
Pro bono.
Pro bono, thank you, Mr. Attorney's husband, pro bono, but at any rate, they've gotten some legal opinion that they have statutes to show that they might be in violation, and then, of course, the watershed district had their attorney respond. I'm not an attorney, so I guess what I'd like to hear back maybe at our next September meeting would be a brief report from Mr. Rosso on what's the lay of the land here and what is truth here from the perception of our attorney, who we live and die by, so we need your opinion on that.
Yeah.
Maybe I don't, but.
Yeah.
So if we could have that, and then there's kind of another issue out there that's much longer term, but what are the deep goals that the watershed districts try and accomplish? And how does that, some of them fit our goals and some may surpass what we really are trying to accomplish as well. And what is the science in that? It's just a bigger issue, and it just seems like these are our, in many cases, these are our residents, a lot of them, and the impacts of this watershed district, the majority, I believe, of the land of this watershed district is Eden Prairie, and I believe the majority of the funds collected come from Eden Prairie, but the majority of the money's not being spent in Eden Prairie. I believe that's accurate, I hope I'm quoting correctly, but it's just something that, again, as a city council, I really want to, maybe not then, I'll withdraw that, but at the very least, I want to have us involved and become a lot more knowledgeable before these rules, which perceptually seem onerous. They might be, I'm a '70s environmentalist, I believe in all that, but at the same time, I also believe that the people of Eden Prairie have to have proper access to the lakes and they need to be able to be recreational lakes, and so it's just a complicated issue. So I'll stop, but I just would like those two ideas to maybe go forward with consensus, if that's okay with all of you.
Yeah, and also, they had a map where something like 2,300 of residential lots in Eden Prairie could potentially be affected by these rules because they're within 500 feet of some form of wetland, it's not just lake or stream.
What type of watershed?
Yeah, and I don't think that's fully understood and how that might affect our own planning and such, or especially if somebody wants to add on something to their house, it kicks them into a whole different thing that they might not understand, nor do I think I understand enough about just, but this map, you know, it had red colored for all the lots that would be affected, and there wasn't a whole lot of white on the map. So, yeah, it really does need some slowing down and some reports back to us about how this is going to affect our policy.
I think that's great, and I also think it would be helpful to know why we even have watershed districts if, what I'm hearing from some of the members of this group is that we have the ultimate authority for making some of these rules. Well, then, why is there a watershed? Are they supposed to be advisory to us, and are we supposed to be setting the rules? I don't know. I'd like to know why they were set up originally and what issues they were supposed to deal with and how they were supposed to function, because I think that's really unclear, not just on our part, but also on the part of the members of the watershed board.
My, I agree with all those concerns, and my concern also is that when we look at, we have not just one watershed district in Eden Prairie, we have multiple watershed districts, and so if each of the watershed districts has their own set of rules, how do you, you know, when someone comes to us with a project that they want to develop in Eden Prairie, you know, it's, to me, it seems like a very confusing and onerous process for someone to go through to say, well, you know, does the city approve it? Which watershed? And maybe their project is in two different watersheds, I mean, and so they might have two different potentially standards that they have to abide by, so it could be very, very confusing.
Well, and it could be to the point where, you know, if you pulled a permit to put new foundations for a slightly larger deck that would meet the normal requirements, you could be in a completely different situation in one watershed district versus another watershed district within our city, and how does that meet a fairness test?
Right, and that's my concern. It can be very confusing.
And I think, if I'm hearing everything correctly, that legislatively, statutorily, cities have power over watershed districts if the cities have passed ordinances. I believe that's, we're going to find out, we need to find out more about that, that's the whole point of this, and if that's true, we might be ceding some of our powers here, and we definitely want to find out more about that. And that would get to then your point of there are different watershed districts. Well, if cities actually did have the ultimate final word or power, then that would answer how that works if different watersheds, because we have three watershed districts in our city, clearly, that would potentially create a mass of all kinds of, you know, permits and zoning processes.
Exactly.
Well, good, are we in agreement then, mainly asked for it to be halted or indefinitely, you know, moratorium postponed until we find out and then second, get the report back from an attorney that would educate us?
Yeah.
So if I can summarize what you're looking for, then I have a suggestion about one of the items that you asked for. So we could get a little bit of history, too, of watershed districts and kind of their status and their authority, I think, you know, very, very briefly, of all the different districts that are out there. Some simply exist to educate, some exist to raise money to, for capital projects that occur in their district, and some have full-blown rulemaking permitting authority. It's the spectrum, which I think is confusing to some people, but we could talk a little bit about that. We can also talk about the status of the rules. That's one item that we've had had, we have had before you on a few occasions, and I think when you talk about the map and how many people it affects, I'm not sure if that's the original iteration of the rules or if it's, they've considered not adopting certain portions of the rules related to buffers, and that's something we've commented on, and actually, I think there was a set of comments, an earlier set of comments in March that you voted on with our concerns about some of the rules as a city government, but we'll get the status on those rules as well. The city attorney's actually done a little bit of research already, so I think in two weeks from today, he'll be able to provide that overview of statutory rulemaking authority and what Councilmember Case mentioned related to if we have a local watershed management plan, what does that mean for their rulemaking authority? So we could do all that. What may help me is if you don't mind, actually making a motion to authorize me to contact the watershed district and ask that they hold off on adopting the rules, so I think that might be a little more weight if you actually take a vote on asking me to do that, if you would put that in a motion, but I think we could then cover all of those items.
So moved.
In two weeks.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Okay, Councilmember Nelson, did you have something?
Yeah, just something quick, and to come out, that Eden Prairie's been named to one of the top 10 safe cities, and I just wanted to congratulate both the administration and especially our police department for that. I think that's very important to residents and business people in the city that we are a super safe city, and much of that goes to our police department, and I would say a little bit to our fire department, too. I don't know how much that's looked at, but I would like to extend our congratulations to them and also a keep up the good work.
I think a lot to our fire department if I see in the back.
It's like, am I missing?
To clarify that, and thank you for bringing that up, Kathy, to clarify that, I believe we were ninth, but I also believe of the 10, seven of them were outstate, which might make, I mean, I'm not saying everything in this small town is safe, but they don't have some of the issues of inner-city. And of the 10, then, three were more suburban, more urban, and so we're in the top three, really, in the Southern County metro area, which is pretty amazing.
Yeah, it is.
Really excellent job, our police and our fire.
Yeah, great, thank you for bringing that up. Our next item is a report from the city manager on the property tax levy and the proposed budget. Mr. Getchell.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As I mentioned, the HRA meeting, you have till the end of this month to adopt a preliminary budget and levy, one of which that could be lowered but not raised, so what you are setting is your maximum. Also would be the numbers that would go out to people that are going to receive their statements, proposed tax statements in October, November, and we would also ask that, part of this action is that you set a hearing that we would hold at our December meeting, and we would have a presentation, and we would receive public input on our proposed budget and tax levy as well, so that action is also included. As a little bit of background, the packet does include some material, a lot of good summary material and background information on a lot of the work that we did on our budget and a lot of the discussions that council had at workshops this summer, including the main drivers in the budget, some of the issues that affect us at the state and federal level and requirements that we have. But this is the second year of a two-year budget. In the odd year, we spend quite a bit of time preparing two years' worth of a budget, but each and every year, we need to approve the budget and the tax levy on individual year. So in the even year, or the second year, it's more a fine-tuning and tweaking and coming forward with updates to where we might stand in relation to our budget. And when we were before you in July, we were talking about a budget, a total city budget in the range of 2% to 2.5% and potentially a preliminary tax levy that could be anywhere from 2% to 2.7%. Since then, we have been able to fine-tune some of our numbers, and we've had some good news as it relates to the tax levy and budget that we're asking you to set. We are looking at a total city budget of less than 2%, 1.9%. The general fund, which is more tied to the tax levy, is 2.4%, and that 2.4% is also what we're asking you to set as the total levy. And as we've discussed throughout the last few years, we have had low and declining debt, and even though we've taken on some more debt recently, there was the assurance that our debt would still be flat or declining. So that is the case in the packet that you see, the ability to have a budget that is under 2% and a levy under 2.5% because our debt is still low and declining. Also, the budget that's before you is one in which maintains service levels at what we consider a current, a high, current high level, but is not adding, you know, any new programs or positions in the current budget year. In the past, we've added some programs, in some cases, like a Truth and Housing Inspection Program that's revenue-neutral, or Duty Crew Program, as you were about to say, that we've seen, you know, that's come to fruition with our service levels, but this budget is kind of maintaining, maintaining that pace as well that we're bringing before you. Another item that I mentioned would be the impact. What is the impact to the taxpayer? And we're seeing for the first time in a long time, our values, property values are now going back up, and they're increasing. In fact, the median valued home would see an increase of just over 5%. There is no truly median valued home, but if the home is in that 330-some thousand-dollar range, that's up 5% from what the median valued home was previously, and the tax impact on that would be 2.9% or, I believe, $31. So you have a situation now where values are staying the same or increasing, and in many cases, taxes could be flat or declining, but at least in the example I give of the median valued home that's gone up 5%, the proposed tax, city tax on that home is under 3%. So we've kind of moved away from declining values and increased taxes to stable and increasing values and very moderate tax impacts as well that we're seeing. And we're also seeing that in the commercial area as well with increasing. And, uh, we're also seeing that in the commercial area as well with increased values. But as we get toward the end of the year, we'll share more information about what percent of properties may see a decrease in taxes or an increase in taxes. But the focus is on setting that levy and that budget. And at this point in time, the resolution before you asks that you adopt the proposed 2015, uh, levy and budget, and then set the public meeting for December of this year, December 2nd. And, uh, staff is able to answer, hopefully able to answer any questions you have. You know, maybe one last comment as I look at the document too. Uh, one other real positive note is when you look at the tax bill, we're about a fourth of the tax bill. Uh, so we, we, we only can, we only control a small portion of that. But, uh, for the first time again in probably three or four years, our rate, our city rate, uh, will decrease. And that again goes back to, um, if you take the value of a property, you multiply it, um, against the rate, and that's how you come up with the local property tax. And that we would have a decreasing rate is, is a very positive thing. Increasing values, decreasing rate. So if you looked at, in the packet, you could see, um, just in, from 2013, our city was valued at $8.5 billion and were proposed in 2015, um, to be back to that $9 billion value again with more projects, more development, and, um, improving current property values.
Any questions? Uh, Councilmember Case?
Uh, just two here. One is, do we have a sense whether that typical imaginary average median home is back to where, had, did it regain its loss from '08, '09, '010 during the recession? Um, and I realize there should have been a percentage increase going on anyway, but I mean, did we, did it get back to where, you know, if they tried to sell their house in 2008, they're trying to sell it this year, are we back to where we were?
It's, it's getting quite a bit closer because if we make that 5% jump in one year alone and we were seeing a decrease of, you know, 1.5% to 2.5% for three years, that 5% um, uh, does almost bring it back all the way. I would have to check, if not, it's close.
Get back then it does to go, but still, the idea is-
But it, I, I think it's getting there. As I said, you can see the total value of the city is, um, it's not quite at the 2008, '09 levels if we add up all the property, but it is working its way back there. Again, that's new development too, though.
I was gonna say, we also have some new development in there. And then my, my second question is, these percentages of residential, percentage, I'll show you where this. Our projected percentage increase of residential, typical average going up 2.9%, apartments 2.4%, commercial down 3.2. And then you say it's all, it's already contingent a little bit on the final captured tax increment finance, or tax increment, which we won't know. Um, but the formula itself, we don't, that, that, that's a piece? Or do we, or has the state legislature set that so we can make some calculations based on a set formula?
We, we can make calculations on what the state has set because it's the legislature that can decide at what rate they tax what type of properties. And that if they would have taken action on that, and they've done that in the past, 10 years ago, uh, there was a big push with previous, uh, the two previous governors before to lower business property taxes. And the way to do that was to lower the class rate on commercial property, which then, which then picked, the burden got placed more on the residential property, and that was a policy decision.
So they don't tweak those any way, any basis?
They, they do not, and they have not in, in recent years.
These are pretty set, based, once we find out the captured tax increment, okay?
That's correct. And I think also you pointed out, Councilmember Case, the commercial decrease. I think that's also the first, um, projected decrease for commercial property tax in probably the last three or four years. So I have a meeting with the chamber next week, so I look forward to sharing that information with them.
But it's a zero-sum game, so that does complicate a little bit residential and apartments if one side's going down. So the chamber's thrilled and it might impact individual homeowners.
Correct.
Not as positive.
True.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, I wanted to say thank you to staff again for keeping our budget within the inflation level and below 2%. Um, I think it's partially the use of some of the innovative things you've done to do things more with less. And, um, it's, it takes hard work to keep a budget under control like that and still have superb services, and happy employees and happy council members and residents and everything, so.
And a safe city.
And a safe city, yeah, and we seem to be doing that.
Fire employees.
And so, um, I think you should be commended for keeping it below the inflation level and still doing all the rest of this. I don't know how we can expect a whole lot more.
But we do.
Oh, yeah.
And this is the max, we can always go down from here.
Is there a motion?
Well, I would move to adopt a resolution that certifies the proposed 2015 property tax levy to be $33,792,311, and sets December 2nd, 2014 as the meeting, which will include discussion of the budget and provide for public comment, and accepts the proposed 2015 budget of $44,337,935, and consensus approves the HRA tax levy of $200,000.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion passes. Any other business to bring before the council? Hearing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.